Making pads out of concrete and attaching them to the driveways. So, the recommendation I'm making here is that the approved surface is concrete. It's concrete or it's equivalent, meaning...
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what does "or equivalent" mean? Can you define these terms?
Well, we have a problem with so many that put in a driveway for their parking area, but they were pavers. It's a beautiful driveway.
Yeah.
But they were pavers. So, but, you know, is that concrete? I mean, we were scratching our heads. We obviously knew it was good. So, I'm not sure...
But if we say, I mean, you want to leave at that end, that you were...
Well, then people put down four paystones and call that an improved surface.
Well, I think if you build a pavered driveway, something that's meant to have vehicles on it versus a patio, you'd have to put a base down and all that stuff, don't you? I mean, I remember hearing that from a guy that worked on roads and stuff.
I mean, the people that do... Dorothy Briggs has a beautiful driveway. It's all pavers. And, you know, they put down the liner, there's cushioned sand. You know, it's beautiful. I mean, it's tight, it's really beautiful. I mean, you would never say that's a... They did that to save money around the corner. It's a beautiful driveway. I just was hesitant, and I'm open to any language you want to put on there, that probably having pavers, I think, when we're talking about people just perform with that.
Yeah, that's different. You can spell it out because I'm just trying to prevent you from getting into the same problem again. People interpret your plans. And if you've been outside of pavers and concrete, is there any asphalt, I guess?
Well, I mean, we could make it concrete, and then maybe you have to come up with bearings. If it's not concrete, that's the alternative.
Then you can specify if it's pavers, it's got to have sand or whatever base and all that stuff.
Well, the problem wasn't the base. I mean, the problem was whether you do pavers in a rectangle like this or whether you take four individual pavers.
No, it's got to be a driveway type of, you know, parking lot. I don't mean the four pavers.
Right, that becomes the definition problem, you know, size or whatever, right? Like, pavers...
You don't think the word "equivalent" will be a problem? That's fine.
Well, I'm okay with deleting it and then making somebody come to council for bearings. If that's...
But I think "pavers done right" is okay. So, you could say concrete base or pavers and specify it's got to have six inches of sand, it's got to discreet it properly and all that.
How many of them?
Well, you can say it's got to be a contiguous driveway. You can't throw four pavers. He can say anything.
Right, no, I agree. Now, that was... Because the other part of this, in this definition, is we have people put out items.
Yeah.
And that defeats the whole purpose. If you can just put a boat in your backyard and just throw four bricks down, park it on the four bricks in the middle of the backyard, that's not what we want. So, we've made it now where you can only get to a spot through a driveway. So, it has to be attached.
Right.
There can be no islands. No islands are allowed. Because I think we're bending over backwards, giving people the idea of building a park boat and trailers and RVs and everything on your own property, that's fine. Just do it right. Comments from...
Did you say something?
No, I was just going...
I don't think there are any proposed wording there, though.
I was trying to read it, and it was... Is that what you're thinking, Darrell?
Well, I was just concerned because this whole thing is to prevent people from interpreting, making their... Come up with their own interpretations and interpretations of the ordinance, like for pavers, whenever...
But we're the ones who do the interpretation.
Yeah, which is...
We do. When you submit the purpose.
So, if it was like this, like what you're saying, which is concrete, and then if they want to do a paver and that's their driveway?
Then that's a variance.
Yeah, maybe they could present a document saying, here's how we're gonna lay the pavers, because would we want them to do a sand base and all that stuff?
Percentage-wise, whether there are less than 1% of houses in town that have paper driveways.
Very few, very few.
So, maybe we just handle it on a variance basis.
I mean, variance is few and far between.
And then this addresses the potential asphalt.
Right, I mean, I agree. Yeah, it's kind of... And the driveway has to... So, for instance, when Mike was here, the original intent of that variance, what happened earlier tonight, the owner that's buying that wanted to have like a six-foot-wide strip running down the side yard, all the way to the property line. And then blossom that out of the side yard to have 10-foot wide all the way to the property line to park his boat outside his window. And that got vetoed in so many ways, it's hard to explain. But that's kind of what stops that. You can't use your side yard and go inside those setbacks to put a ramp, to put an area in your backyard. So, in the shores, some people have parking spaces in their backyards. That's okay, because they don't put in the side yard. They go to their own side yard without getting in the setback. But you can do that, as long as that driveway is...
So, you're saying that what he wanted to originally do with the boat wasn't a setback?
Yes, it was all the way to the property line. Taking up the entire setback with concrete, all the way to the sideline. The whole entire side yard. There'll be no grass in the side yard. From the edge of the house.
So, question, all of the current situations that don't meet the new standard of grandfather?
Correct. They don't need grandfather until they sold the house. Because the new person coming in would be told, what? Same way as if somebody doesn't have a fence or something like that.
Right.
If you can't park your boat on that gravel pit in the side yard, that is not allowed.
Okay, got it.
I don't care, I like, yeah, I like kind of lock it down concrete. Just manage the edge cases with bearings. And again, it's kind of a previous one, right? It's some lessons learned. It's the direction that people kind of took it. It's not a step completing overall for the towns. I think this is a better way to go.
All right, any other questions?
Action.
Yeah, so my motion to approve the ordinance as redlined in tonight for junk and abandoned vehicles.
All right, I have a motion. Do you have a second? All right, Liz has got the second. Liz has got the second. All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, next up. We continue rolling. All right, consideration of candidate form and electioneering ordinance. All right, so on this one here, so now we... So, the idea here is pretty easy, and I think I laid it out in the memo. The idea here is that, you know, we're using City Hall. So, the... Is that Secretary of State? Who's the one, Daniels? Who do you always call when you're...
Secretary of State.
Secretary of State. So, everything's fine, as long as we lock down rules. So, it's not politically oriented. It's not... It's an information session. So, if it's a public information session, then those are perfectly fine in the city facilities. We've now done three of these in the past. So, lessons learned from the three that we've done. The turnout is tremendous. The turnout is standing remotely, so they're very well received. I think they're very useful. The town has shown from the fact they're standing remotely that they find value. The issue that we have to do is we need to lock it down. We need to get rid of any degrees of freedom. Make sure that when we do this, that it's definitive. So, if you want to run for office, just turn in your paperwork. Linda can give you a copy of the ordinance. And your only decision is, do you want to participate or not? But the rules are fixed. This is the format. This is what's gonna happen. This is the timeline. This is when it goes into mayor's letter, dot, dot, dot. Now, there are lots of possible permutations. We could sit here and go through 100 ways of doing this. I don't want to do that. All we need is one, because we've got to lock down something. So, this was my ability to lock it down the best that I can to minimize any potential game plan. And without going into specifics, the person that gets stuck in the crosshairs for this is Linda. Because Linda's the one that, when we have had issues in the past, they go onto Linda, demand that she change things, and she must do this, and she must do that. She ends up the one taking the heat because of past experiences. And so Linda is stuck. So, what we want to do is we want to get Linda out of this loop. That there is no decision. The decision is the candidate only. You either participate or you don't participate. But that's it, okay? So, that's the objective of fixing this. So, you'll see some of the redline stuff. We wanted to get into, you know, if the candidates could agree. Well, that ship is sick. We've already been down that path.
They can't agree.
And certain candidates just had ideas about, you know... It was just, it was nightmare scenario. You know, you agree, and then they disagree with what they just proposed. And I don't want to go through all the iterations we went through. It was a nightmare. So, this is the idea of locking it down. So, are there any questions?
Yeah, did you mimic another town's ordinance on this? Or this is just a supplement you kind of come up with?
Well, this... So, this ordinance is our creation from, whatever, 2014 or something when we did it.
Okay, this is already in existence, you're just amending it.
Yes, and all these ones here already exist. So, and we did this in response to Secretary of State, you know, saying, you know, because we said, look, we don't... Most... If we were a bigger city, we would have it at the gym. We'd have it at the auditorium of the school, because that's a different government entity. And the ISD people would have it in city halls meeting area, because that's a different government resource. So, we trade. But we don't have anybody to trade with. We don't have any other facility. So, the first time we did it, the Secretary of State sort of said, you're okay, but you got to make sure it's not a political rap. You can't stand up and, you know...
I think I also chose this with the Texas Attorney's Department.
Yes, that's right, yeah. And both of their things were, look, put as much as you can in writing, make sure it's successful to everybody, and just do the best you can to lock it down. And so, my first iteration of locking it down, we allowed for some cooperative stuff, because we didn't know how it would work. And it worked out well the first couple. I think, Darryl, you've been through it. Clint, you've been through it.
Yeah, I was just...
I've been through it.
Yeah, quick comment. So, it was originally adopted in 2016. So, it's gone through a couple election cycles. So, this is... What Mark's proposing here is some lessons learned from scheduling these before. So, that's where, I mean, I don't think, to answer your question, Liz specifically, it wasn't a specific city. It was basically a custom fit for our town. Like Mark said, there is no public building, right? So, this is the only building we have that can be conducted unless we want to do it in somebody's house. Other than a few spelling errors here and there, the bulk of the stuff is in Section 5.
Everything's not redlined, it was already there. It's already an active ordinance.
Yeah, basically, you're just setting rules and making it where both parties have to follow the rules. There's no little random...
No compromise. No compromise.
And it's narrowing down the days, because I was... Something we learned too is it maybe encroaches on... And so, this building is also for rent, if you want to rent it. So, we're trying to keep it flexible, so people can still rent it for whatever their use is.
Is this something that would be handed out to a potential candidate when they...
I always provide this ordinance and the guidelines in the candidate packets anytime anybody indicates that they want to file.
Hi, question. As a childish candidate in town, what if a candidate is purposely submitting a date when they know the other candidate is on vacation? You know, like, what if they know that person's downtown and they're purposely... Now they have 50/50 chance of that candidate not being heard off? So, there's no way around it.
Well, here's another option. And I told myself, what would be your options? Here's another one that I thought of. So, the only way to lock it down is you say, seats 1 and 2, when they're up, that's the last Saturday in March. Seats 3 and 4 are the first Saturday in April. The 5 and 6 seats are up, you're the second Saturday in April. And those are the three dates. Live with it, arrange your schedule, don't show. Those are the three dates.
Let's iterate to that. Let's not go, let's not swing the needle all the way over there.
So, that would be the hardest of, that's it.
I think that would probably be better, because then you know not to schedule things around that specific day.
Right, so I was torn between, like you're saying, the best case in a perfect world is could two of you guys get together and say, you know, the kids have got school the next day, could we do it on Saturday? And Darrell says, sure, Saturday works for me, let's do it. That's not what we have. The experience is from the past, yes, I'll do it Saturday. Okay, great, I'm good with Saturday, but then I don't want to do it. I want to do it now on Tuesday. Okay, fine, I'll do it Tuesday. No, I don't want to do it on Tuesday now. We play these childish games that that's what happened in the past, that we can't... We don't want to go. So, you're right, in theory...
Yeah, the other downside is, however, I mean, there could be an unaffordable event in someone's life, death, that you simply can't make it. And that's not the fault.
I mean, the other...
That's the reason...
Is to merge those together. If you can't agree, then it is on this day. That's the other option, is if you don't agree before the 15th... Then this is the day, this is the default date.
Until the candidates agree on this.
I was thinking, you set a date, unless you agree to change it.
Right, here's the default date.
Because you could have two candidates that could easily agree and change. You know, it's not always going to be people disagreeing. But, you know, that would be the subject.
Because early voting starts like April around the 20th. And March, I wanted to get into the mayor's letter for the March 15th, because everybody... So, we only have like a three-week window opportunity. That's why you can only do it once. But, you know, so the clock is ticking to pick the date. And so, that's... Okay, so what I'm... Since you would say, if rather than drawing it out of a hat or putting Linda into the draw lots, we would just say, seats 1 and 2, the last Saturday of March...
So, why don't we table it, and then come back and rewrite it to fix dates?
Okay, so you want me to make that change and bring it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I think by the time you look at the calendar and everything, what we do tonight may not really fit on the calendar so much.
Yeah, because we can't pick, obviously, date dates. Because, you know, but Saturdays, because we know there's three Saturdays between...
So, in general, we're setting a date unless the candidates can mutually agree.
And you've got a deadline to agree.
Yeah, I was about to say that. You have to set a deadline for the agreement.
And then that's it, because I got to put it in the mayor's...
This is a fallback date, done.
Got to go to the mayor's. Okay, all right, thank you. I think that was a helpful issue, too. All right, sorry.
I have to go pick up angel from the central office. And then tell the town.
Are you gonna take Kate with you as you leave?
No, I'll be back.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're coming back? Okay. So, we are going to table that. So, we will move on. Next up is, okay, item number 12, which is consideration... There is nothing to consider, it's a discussion item. And I would be succinct. What I'm working on is we have an ordinance...
How often do we say that word?
Shireen is Googling it to find out what it means.
Wait, wait for me to... Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I started working on the financial... We have a financial responsibility ordinance. It deals with our internal controls. And as I started looking at it, my goal was to try and... We have certain things in multiple ordinances relating to disclosures and what we can do and what things need to be presented to council. And they're different ordinances. And the idea was, this financial responsibility ordinance, let's just put it all in one. So, we have everything in one place, rather than having three different ordinances governing, you know, who can open up bank accounts is over there. You know, putting our check register on the internet each month is over there. Telling the council about our investments that we make, the investment policy is over there. They're all over the place. So, what I'm putting together is, so I started, as I was working on this ordinance, realizing this is actually putting four ordinances into one dossier. So, let me time out, let me lay it out the right way. You can't really redline this. You got to... So, what it is, is our current financial, we have our financial responsibility ordinance. I can tell you what's coming. Section 1, what we already have, is about controls. What the mayor's authority are, what he can spend money on, what contracts he can sign, who will the check signers to signature. It's about the controls that the auditor wants to see. It's internal controls on the financials. The second part of this is going to be bringing in from other ordinances, the disclosures. What are the disclosures relating to the investments we have, stuff that we put on the web, like the check register? Budget versus actual, when the mayor has to present to the council updates on the budget, where we stand. So, it's putting that into another section about disclosures. The third part is something we already have, is the investment policy. That'd be Part 3. Part 4, which I'm going to bring to you, is going to be what's called a funds... A fund balance policy. And it's something that our financial advisors wrote. It basically just says, in so many words, if our cash position drops to a certain level, if so many, a percentage of our expenses, our reserves, then we will adopt these policies. If our reserves drop below 20%, we will cancel all TML trips. Just a... Most cities have this. Bond rating agencies want to check the box that we have. So, when we borrow money to put in the wells, we have to have it anywhere. Might as well, instead of having it... So, it's going to be in this big ordinance. So, that's coming, and when it comes next month, we'll talk about it. But about 75% of it already exists. It's just reconfiguring it and merging stuff that's in different places.
I'll work with it. We'll do our best to try to identify what really are the redlines.
Yes.
Because it is merging four documents, so it's going to be kind of difficult to do that. Kind of a squall of nine words.
And that's really why I stopped, because it's almost like I'm going to redline two pages. And I'm going to add now three pages of redlines. The document is a fraction. This is the wrong... This isn't the documented one. This is not the redlined version of a big document. So, that will come back to you. So, that was a discussion only, I have... So, there's nothing to do there. Next up, consideration of water and wastewater ordinance. This is a... We have a lot of wastewater ordinance that covers basically our procedures. You know, you can't have a well, you know, the usual stuff. You got to deposit, you got to fill out forms. It's administrative. There are two things in here that I want to change. One item is the deposit. So, I went back and did some research, you know, obviously, as it says, 97. So, it's been over 20 years since our deposit changed. And, you know, obviously, the average water bill is a fraction of what it was 20 years ago. And I shouldn't say water, utility bill in general. And we never updated our deposits. It hasn't been a problem in the past, it's become a problem now. Because people get three months behind. And we wrote off, I think it's three grand we wrote... $3,200 we've written off in the last two months. I'm just saying the last two years. Over three grand, and people that stiff us, they run away. And the way that, way the law works is, is actually quite clever. What the water code says is, it says, you're a city, you're a municipality, you get to decide when you turn them off. That's totally up to you. You get to decide what your deposit should be. Totally up to you. Nobody can oversee that other than you. If you do that wrong and you end up upside down, you can't come after anybody. You can't come after the landlord, you can't come after the other people, you can't come after the new people. You can't do crap, because it's on you to do it right. And we're not doing it right. We're not doing it right. So, my proposal is, I think, the way that would help us, because I'll be honest with you, you know, we didn't, we're not out of pocket $3,200. Because some of that is late fees, where you didn't pay. Didn't cost us anything, but it's money that we're not out. But a big chunk of that is money we're out. We have to pay the garbage company. We pay them every month, then we collect it from you. We have to pay sales tax and the pumping tax and the groundwater tax. We have to pay all of these things out of pocket, and then collect it from you in arrears. So, we are out of money. So, my proposal is, and here, I left it blank, because the number we choose will go into fee ordinance coming up. So, we'll probably delete the section about the deposit, it'll be deleted from this order, considering the fee ordinance. My proposal is that we make it $300 instead of $200, prospectively. Moving forward. Nobody has to do anything, it's already here. In fact, there's a minority in town, it's called Linda, you might be one of them, that's a $100 deposit, because they were here before 97. And, you know, in the books, we show $100 as their deposit. So, administratively, that's what we would do. And now we cure some of the issues with the redhouses. I think 80% of this is redhouses. It's very infrequent that somebody that lives here gets so far behind that they step us, and then they run away. It usually doesn't happen. Okay, any questions about the deposit? Is there?
No, I think it's good if the goal is to set the deposit, the amount that covers not only our costs, but what we would give back, more like they have paid their bills. I think that's totally reasonable.
Okay. So, I think $300 is the right number for us. And again, it's only going forward. Nobody going back. So, any new house, any new red house, any new construction, everybody going forward, it's $300. All right, the other issue that I put in there, some of this is just deleting ones that were... They were supporting, doesn't matter.
Right, and this is all covering the fee ordinance I was about to do.
Right. The only change, substantive change here is, so traditionally, if you want to pump water out of the lake, it requires permits from the Corps, requires permits from Dallas. You have to buy a Dallas, you got to buy a water line, lease from the Corps. There's lots of stuff. And one of the steps is you have to get a letter from the city saying that we allow you to do it. And obviously, with water rationing and everything else, the more people pull out of the lake, the better. Because they're not taken out of the offer. So, we have always said yes. There's a form letter we send, we give to anybody that asks and say, yes. We as the city don't care. Because ultimately, you have to get permission from the federal government and the city of Dallas. Problem running into is, we've had two COs recently, both of them on water. Both of them had tied their lake pump into the city water. They cross-connected. And these are older houses. That is a drag of the sea. Seering the sea, go directly to jail, violation of the water.
And that affects everybody in town if you pull the public water system...
Right. If you put on that lake pump and you pump it out of that lake and go into your irrigation line that goes into the city line, you're going to overpower the city line. That lake pump will over... You'll send the water back into the mains. We had it twice, twice in the last two months. Where at the CO inspection, we looked at it and found that they had tied it together.
Twice in the two months is a discovery, not a pollution.
That's right, I'm sorry, that's correct, yes. And the solution is, they have to hard disconnect, they have to go away. They have to pick. You got to pick, either you're going to use city water or you're going to use lake water. Pick it. So, what I'm proposing here is, basically, if you want to come in and get that letter from us, you're going to have to say that you're not going to connect the two together. You're going to put it in writing. And when you do get the permission from the Corps and get permission from Dallas, because we go first, we have to give you the letter first. And then you got to go to Dallas second, and you got to go to the federal government third. What I'm proposing here is, by the time you get the actual permit, the consent agreements from the Corps, and you start pumping before you engage, we have to do a CSI inspection. You have to pay for an inspection. We have to go out and verify that we've not crossed it. And that's a condition of the letter.
The CSI is governed by TCU.
It's mandatory, we have to do a water inspection for every house, whenever we give them water. But it's, it would be fairly common that, Darrell, if you moved to the lake and wanted a new house there, and we did the water inspection, you might decide, I'm going to pump out of the lake now. You start that process, it'll take six months. So, we're not going to be inspecting that when we did the original CSI, if you decide to do it later.
Well, this would also cover a change, maybe a home didn't have it, change of ownership, and then they decide how to do this.
Right, so I'm going to go back to the Corps and ask them if, when they do a renewal, because we just all renewed. We did renewals about a couple of years ago. It's only good for five years, and then you have to renew. I'm going to ask them if on renewal, they can get this letter required on renewal. To not allow us to find these things at the renewal, not, you know... I have a suspicion that there are at least several more in town that are connected. But I...
How you do that inspection? How you do that inspection that's all underground, right? How do you know if they...
Well, if they have a lake pump, you see where that, where it comes out and where it goes. And then you go to the front yard and see where the water line goes. So, you know, there's, there's ways to, yeah.
So it is possible, after implementing all the, all the new steps you're talking about, that someone could still interconnect them?
Yes.
So do we need to, because, I mean, this is serious, potentially, we've probably been very lucky today. Do we need to consider some punitive damage if it is, at some subsequent time, discovered that, that's what's transpired?
I think that's already in the, I think we can do that in twenty-two. Yeah, I think there is. Because many years ago, we had a, we had a house that was.
Criminal conviction that's seen in our court.
Two hundred dollars?
No, up to two thousand.
Two thousand, it's safe.
Okay. Many each day, it can.
We, we had somebody squatting in the house on Hillside many years ago, and we had turned the water off, and they went out with, with pliers, and they ripped the meter open, so they could have water squatted in the house. And the bank had it, and we went out to pay it for the two thousand dollars, because they damaged the public water system by, the squatters, not, they're not securing the house. So we haven't built this one time, and they paid it. But, yeah, at the end of the day, you know, Ed, I mean, you know.
Okay, we gotta cover, I'm good.
But.
I don't, I like the idea of trying to, if, if the Corps will allow, you know, enforcement, you know, so we can, I mean, because it is, it does affect all of this, right? This isn't trying to single out a finding wrongdoing, but this is affecting everybody in town.
And, and the two that we found in the last two months is the house changed hands.
Right. And there's some houses that don't, haven't changed hands for a long time.
Correct.
So what happens if we, if it does get contaminated, do we get federal agencies involved, and we have to do certain flushing?
I don't know, we, I don't know.
No telling?
We, we don't know. I mean, you know, we had the issue eleven, when the councils were, yeah, we had the issue with Wes, Wes Weller. When he first went into his house, he had to work on his pump, because his pump was malfunctioning, and they hooked it up backwards. And Wes had an interconnect, that was the illegal, now Wes bought the house, he didn't, he was new, he hooked it up, and they put something on it, three million gallons of the city water, they pumped it in the lake. Because he had the pump reversed. He got like a twenty-five thousand dollar water bill from the city. They're anecdotes.
Having a third party inspector on this stuff is, it's, it's a lot of insinuations, just another one that, all right, we need to.
So this is the change I proposed to this, I think it's important.
And you're asking the Corps, everybody, if it has inspection, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking, when, when, we do a renewal, you gotta repay, you gotta, you gotta fill out forms and, and pay them again, and acquire easements, and there's steps. I'm gonna go to them and say, can you make one of those steps in here to say, you must get a letter from your city to verify you're still allowed to pump out of the lake? And now force them to commit.
We can't, we can't by ordinance ask the federal government to redo something, just, it doesn't really change any of the tests here. It's more just going to them and saying, like Mark said.
And what if they say no?
Well, the other option, which, you know, I, I do not bring this.